Hammond City Council Public Hearing Agenda, May twenty eighth, twenty twenty four, five thirty P. M. Roll call, please.
Councilman Andrews.
Present.
Councilman Diveterio.
Present.
Councilman Wells.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Present.
Councilman Leon.
We're headed into our public hearing with our old business. A few announcements before we get into that. We will be holding to the clock on three minutes for any responses that are being made from the public. There's a process, we will follow the process of everything that is on this agenda and the items that are placed on here. Also, I ask that you please be courteous to one another and use respect toward one another. First item, please.
In ordinance to amend the UDC regarding the definition of group living, Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Thank you. So, I introduced an amendment to our UDC to define, quote unquote, homeless shelter, because it was not defined in the UDC. There were inconsistencies in the UDC, which is our Uniform Development Code. There were inconsistencies for, quote unquote, group living. My tax amendment was sent to the Planning and Zoning Commission, and we asked that they'd make recommendations on it. So, that was the process. We do that often when we're making changes to our development code, where we have the Planning and Zoning look at it and tell us with their expertise a better way to do it or what their recommendations are. So, that went to the Planning and Zoning, and I commend the Planning and Zoning Board and our city planner, Edward Campney, because they have done exactly what we wanted and more, which is to check that definition that I created and say, "That's not quite right." And there's some other things that are inconsistent or unclear, and so they have set out quite a few changes that, for everyone to know, I know there's a lot of people here on this. This is one of the ones that we have decided, or not decided, we will decide tonight, to introduce this for a public hearing, so that everyone can see what those changes are to the ordinances, which change a number of things. I want to be clear that the changes that are in this amendment are not to, quote unquote, unzone the cornerstone project, which I know a lot of people think that's what it is, and that's what I've heard on the streets. In fact, from what the Planning and Zoning has done, it is clear that this amended amendment to the UDC, a homeless shelter is given a definition, group living and group, sorry.
Providing temporary housing to those without a permanent residence, and homeless shelters are a conditional use in commercial highway CH zones.
Okay, so, yeah, I was looking for this. Not only did they give definitions to homeless shelter, they gave definitions to a group care facility and then a group living facility, so we can be more clear on what we're talking about when someone wants to do a project like this. So, they have recommended that homeless shelters are an allowed conditional use for commercial highway. So, it is allowed in the zoning of commercial highway after conditions are met. Part of the question would be, what are the conditions? And that is where we need to talk about, what are the health and safety concerns, fencing, security, licensure with the appropriate state and federal agencies, capacity, the number of homeless shelters that are in the city, input from the community to address issues and needs. For example, when we did Medline, there was a lot of input and a lot of discussion about it, and we built in things that were required for that project. And so, it's a good government to make sure that there's good regulation for projects that come in and make sure that there is success in our community. So, this is just a first step to clear up the parts of our development code that are lacking. Again, it is not to unzone this project, okay? So, it's not time to do this now, but I will be making the recommendation that we reset this for public hearing and introduce the changes that were provided by the Planning and Zoning Board, have that published on the Internet, so people can see what is being changed or proposed to be changed. And that wouldn't be for, probably until June twenty fourth, because we want to make sure that our city attorney is available.
Anyone else from the council having any concerns or questions on this item? Anyone from the public? Step to the mic, please. Give us your name and address, and again, you have three minutes.
Mickey Hubbellam with Brazil Saxon Wilson Law Firm in Baton Rouge, three oh one Main Street. Procedurally, you know, this tax amendment started very short, and essentially, there was no zoning classification or zoning, in the zoning matrix, homeless shelter would not be permitted. I see where that's been revised. Procedurally, with voting on the first draft or voting on the second draft, are they combined? Is the first draft withdrawn? How does that work?
Good question. No, I would withdraw my definition, the one that was presented, because Planning and Zoning has given us a better product. So, what I will be doing at the next part of this is to introduce those changes for recommendation for a public hearing. And Andre, if you have-
So, this, as originally proposed, is basically going to be superseded by what the Planning and Zoning recommended in the city planner. So, they include in their recommendations a different definition of homeless shelter, a different definition of group living and group care facilities. So, procedurally, that's starting from scratch. Basically, tonight will be introduction, so everyone can see exactly what Planning and Zoning recommended, look at it, study it, review it, speak to people. So, that's what is going to happen, expected later in the meeting, introduction of that ordinance, which really supersedes this as originally proposed.
Yeah, I saw it was the same number. The number did change, so there's not going to be a vote on the first draft, there'll be a vote on the old business is essentially tabled or it's not going to be-
Well, it's been changed, so, right. You know, the reason why it's exactly the same on this agenda and hyperlink is because that's what we introduced, and so to be consistent, we do that. But that's why we're reintroducing with all of the relevant information.
All right, thank you.
Hi, my name is Kim Gunderson, P.O. Box ninety-nine in Tickfaw, Louisiana. I'd like to start with a prayer. Lord, I'm just asking you, Lord, to have your way in this place, Father. I'm asking that you open the eyes of the understanding of those in opposition to this shelter, Lord. Father, I'm just asking that you forgive them, for they don't know what they're doing, Lord. Father, just have your way. I just want to share that as I was praying a few months ago, when all this started, I was praying for, in particular, everybody that was in opposition, in particular, Ricotta's, the Cielanos, the city council members, all those, anybody that was in opposition. As I was praying for y'all to be blessed and for you, I'm commanded to pray for those that are against what I stand for. As I was doing this, the Lord brought to my remembrance Luke sixteen, where, and I encourage y'all to read that, where, talking about the rich man and the beggar Lazarus that sat at his gate begging for food. As they both died, Lazarus went on to heaven and paradise, the rich man went on to a place of torment. I just asked the Lord, "What do you want me to do with this? I feel like it's a warning, but what do I do with it?" Because I don't really have connection with any of y'all. I'm just a lady from Tickfaw. But I just encourage you to read that. I ask that you just seek the Lord for what he wants you to do with this. We will stand in judgment whether you believe in God or not, believe his word or not. We stand in judgment for what we do, for our actions, for our decisions. I just ask that you seek him, because whether you believe in him or not, we will stand before him each and every one of us and give account to what we do with especially other people. Thank you.
Carolyn Kane, Camelia, Camelia Drive, off of range. I just want to ask that when you present the information, that you present it as it's written, but also use it in layman's terms, so laypeople understand what's happening. Make it so that average Joe will understand, so that, you know, we don't have to go to an attorney and have this analyzed. Okay, that's it, thank you.
Andre, when this is introduced, it would be everything that you've already given us and that what we received from Planning and Zoning, right?
Yes.
Okay. There's some, I think there's some good layman's information in that packet, which would be hyperlink.
Anyone else? Public hearing, new business, first item, please.
In ordinance of the Hammond City Council, amending the Unified Development Code, providing for a supplemental use article of the Unified Development Code and establishing its general provisions, specific provisions for accessory buildings and uses, and specific provisions for accessory garages. Mayor Pete Pampinto.
We discussed this a little last meeting. This is to help expedite getting things pushed through the permit department. One of the examples we used was, we had a street that ended on a railroad track, it was a dead end, and a person wanted to put an out building there. Could have been a storage facility or something, maybe a mother-in-law's suite, but I think it was more of a garage, and he wanted to do it to the side street. Usually, you don't let the utility buildings or garages face the side street. But in this case, because of the circumstances and nothing being able to be done with that road past the railroad tracks, he was allowed to go ahead and put the building there. That being said, I know Ron is here as well, and can answer some questions, but it was a unanimous approval by the Planning and Zoning Commission to go ahead and make these changes.
I mean, I looked through it and all, and I think there's some, you know, good things on there, and some of it probably could be adjusted by just a variance on some of the, you know, circumstances with different lot sizes, setbacks, and railroad tracks, and instead of changing it, a blanket, blanket change. Also, I mean, the city planner, I think Councilwoman Wells asked to be here last meeting, I don't know, is he here tonight?
No, he's not.
He's not here tonight, okay. And, you know, with issues like this that come to change the UDC, it would be, I think, good practice to have the city planner who we paid for that job and go over all this stuff in detail to answer any questions the public may have on any detailed issues here. And we still don't have him here, which it would be very helpful. That's kind of prime example why we're at with the homeless shelter deal. We had nothing on the books, went ahead, had a moratorium, then added homeless shelter, group homes, all those in detail to that moratorium, so where you can take your time and have a plan put in place and improve the UDC and not rush it, because it takes time to make decisions and look through things and planning. So, by all this information here, I mean, there's a lot of questions on here that, you know, location, this whole chapter has been added to this, at least seven feet, six inches from the side lot line. Why is it six inches? I mean, why is it seven feet? Like, where did all this information come from, the details on it? We didn't have anything in it already stating obstructions, no accessory structures may be placed where would obstruct views necessary, maintain safely. So, all these sidewalks, servitudes, fences, these are all questions here, I'm just trying to understand, why are we repeating what's already in there, or are we adding things to it? Because some of this should have, probably already be in there somewhere.
Some of it is in there, and what they're doing is cleaning up a lot of the language and just trying to make it, as the lady was talking about earlier, a little layman, more friendly. But Eddie is there, you can call him anytime during the day, he's there eight hours a day and be glad to answer.
Well, I would like it in the meeting, with big items of changes come about to the UDC, it'd be very helpful to have the city planner here to answer any maybe questions in detail for the public, and for me, actually, so, especially whenever we're voting on things to change. I think it would be pretty smart practice to actually have, you know, the guy who's actually in detail, looking at all this stuff, writing letters, saying his proposal, so I think it would be pretty good to have that, so.
Mr. Ron, how you doing? Could you kind of help explain this? Do you know anything about this here?
Ron Matthews, nine oh five, Dale Mar, a member of Planning and Zoning Commission. Yes, a lot of this, basically, after I read through it, Eddie had proposed to us, some of it's cleaning up, thank you, thank you, some of it's cleaning up the current UDC language, some of it is addressing some issues, some issues that would, in the past, we've addressed them by way of zoning, by way of making allowances for these particular situations. But my takeaway and our review of this was, after looking through it, understanding that we addressed the issue with public utilities, they are addressed, addressed the issues with situations where you get into where you have at the end of a street with a railroad track, where there's no future development that could take place, specifics scenarios where variances, in the past, we may have used variances to address these issues. I think that cleaning up of the language will prevent us from having to utilize variances in the future. One of the things that I've noticed throughout a lot of the submittals was the fact that sometimes we use variance in the wrong time, for the wrong, not for the right situation, not always understanding the pure definition of a variance. Sometimes we throw items on the agenda that, where they're not really even meeting the criteria for variances. So, by addressing some of this language that we have in the UDC, you make it much cleaner so that variance would not be an option. Either you follow the pure definition, or you apply, you don't apply. That's my takeaway of it.
Okay. And the reason I asked you that, and I'm glad you're here to answer that, this is what I'm afraid of, planning and zoning, and since I've been here, we didn't have, what, one plan in the zoning, and I'm so afraid, we go to changing all these rules, and all of a sudden, the planning and zoning guy gone. And now, the people, the citizens, the citizen of Hammond have to abide by these rules, and now you're dealing with two people. You're dealing with the mayor and planning and zoning to make a decision. What I'm so afraid of, corruption in the state of Louisiana, corruption in the city of Hammond, and when you're doing stuff like this, if the mayor, just use me for an example, if the mayor mad at me, and I'm trying to get something passed, something simple, all of a sudden, either I pay for it, or they vote no for it. That's what I'm so afraid of. And corruption, it's in the state, it's in the city of Hammond, and that's why I'm so afraid, when you start changing rules, and only one man or two people that sit down, eat lunch together all the time, can make a decision, with y'all board is five of y'all, and that's what I prefer, when it go before five than go before two. Just go before one, you know, the mayor might be on vacation, planning and zoning might be on vacation. So, now, all of a sudden, I still have to wait, and I notice this, you know, anytime somebody is out, it keep being delayed, it keep being put off. And now, you said, how long y'all been going over these rules?
It's been several months.
Several months. Okay. I just heard of this two weeks ago, and I did ask, and it's, I'm gonna say it now, I'm not gonna be able to vote on it, because I asked for the planning and zoning guy to be here. Mr. Mayor told me to go to his office. His office should be-
You're talking about the city planner?
The city planner, yeah. His office should be wherever the city councilman requests him to be at. Now, they just asked this yesterday. I asked this two weeks ago, because I wanted him to be able to explain, because even one of the young ladies stood up and talked, and I agree with her so much, and I say it all the time, "Please break it down where I can understand what's going on." You know, we up here talking in a language that the average citizen don't know about, because this not only going to affect, this going to affect the entire city of Hammond, not one person. Because what I've been here, and if I'm wrong, I'm wrong, I've been hearing Lacy trying to do something, and that's where this has started from, she's trying to do an add-on, she's a part of the manifestation. So, when we start changing stuff for one person, now, whether it's a lie or not, I don't know, but this is what I've been hearing, and I don't think it's fair. So, we can sit here and say this man with this garage, which it might be true, but the man with the garage, he ought to be here too, talking about, he appreciate the rules being changed. You know, that's what I look at. So, thank you very much, but I'm lost. I can't speak for the rest of the councilmen, and it's just too much to read in one day, two days, or three days, because I asked Mr. Andre about it. He didn't have no month to review it. He didn't have no two months to review it. Now, am I lying, Mr. Andre, or what?
Well, I've looked at it, Councilman, and that, actually, that ordinance is the more simpler one. It just creates the provision for accessory buildings and uses. And what happens is, when you've got things like garages or an accessory building, really, it's left to a lot of discretion, right, of the staff, as you've talked about. This sort of gives folks the ideas of, these are the things that are going to be looked at when you approve the accessory uses or the garages. So, I think this one's, I think it's more straightforward. I know the Planning and Zoning has been working hard at trying to change the UDC. We all recognize the UDC needs work. It was adopted many, many years ago and takes some work and attention, and this is a product of what they've been doing.
Okay, I'm glad you said it. Okay, we had a whole board before us changing the rules and the regulation, but yet, none of them even came up. So, for the twenty-two, I'm saying twenty-two weeks, for the twenty-two times they met, none of that came up. So, seemed like that should have been important, too, that it's the same rules that come through them, that the councilmen never recommend-
You're talking about the charter review?
Yes, the charter review.
Charter review committee.
So, they met, but none of it came up, and I thought it was very important. Some of the things that they recommended, some of the things that they said, but yet, it's still yet to come up, and no changes have been made. And so, we talking about a two-year process, what they went through. So, how you skip over a two-year process and bring this up, that you said, Mr. Ron Matthews, that y'all went through within a couple of months? And Mr. Andre said that he read within one day. He went through it within one day. So, it just had me puzzled about the whole thing.
Let me just say this, we've been dealing with terminology as it relates to the UDC over a year. I said several months. It's been over a year, almost a year and a half, and some of which was a slow walkthrough, but thankfully, we have a city planner, and he was able to pick it up and move forward and do more of a deep dive into what we're just trying to accomplish. I do agree, it's a lot to digest, and I strongly recommend that a closer, stronger look at the changes that's been proposed, that the council have time to look at it. And I'm all for, I call it joint session, where we're planning, commission, and the city council meet like we did once before. I thought it was very, very helpful, and we can walk through it together and address and get all the questions answered. That's just one meeting. So, if the council desire, I would go back to the commission and speak to my other commissioners, and we'd be more than happy, I'll be more than happy to sit down along with the city planner to work through all these changes, make sure that all questions are answered.
Ron, I had to ask you, I know you said a few months y'all were working on this one. Now, the tax amendments that was proposed to go to Planning and Zoning about the multifamily possible adjustments, that's been there for a while now, and I'm pretty sure that probably was on the Planning and Zoning's agenda, should have been probably before these, because I haven't seen this one or that. You correct me if I'm wrong, this may have been before that, but I'm pretty sure the tax amendments to get a recommendation or approval of or denial of changes about any types of modifications that we may need to make for the, to the UDC regarding the multifamily. I've never seen anything come back to us from Planning and Zoning, so I don't, but I see this pretty much expedited, so.
Yeah, that is correct. That particular issue is still under review from us. I know that the city planner, he has offered a few items relative to that, hopes, hopes that over the next month, six, eight weeks, we'd be able to bring something, present to the council as relates to our, what we feel it should be, number of units and so on and so forth, yeah.
Oh, Mr. Ron, I want to tell you too.
Yes, sir.
Thank you so much.
I appreciate it.
For being a part of the committee, and since I've been here, you about the only one will come to a council meeting, you know, but thank you for everything you do and for your time.
Right, appreciate it, no problem.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
You did say some good points about having maybe a meeting or some type of work session on there with a little deeper dive. You know, this one, you know, this one, you know, isn't as involved as the next one, but, you know, it still, you know, has some questions and some, making sure that, you know, everything is clear on and where some of this information came from and, or how much of it is repeated that's already in there, and they're just trying to consolidate it and clean it up. So, yeah, there's a lot of questions in there, and I don't, you know, so I think we need to really, before we change rules, kind of make sure everybody, you know, has a clear understanding of it, so. Or they may have some changes that may need to be made, that recommendations from someone on the council that may need to be added to this, that didn't send in, so.
Anyone else on this item? So, what I gather here right now is that between both committees, we need to have a meeting.
I mean, I would like to get a better dive into it and understanding of it, before we change some things.
All right. Second item.
In ordinance of the Hammond City Council, amending the Unified Development Code, clarifying minor subdivision, review procedure, lot boundary adjustment procedure, related appeal procedures, withdrawing obsolete procedural diagrams, and directing the city planner through the mayor to make new procedural diagrams available to the public. Mayor Pete?
Once again, here's an attempt to try to simplify and expedite people trying to get smaller items taken care of. So, with that being said, I'm not sure from what I just heard, it sounds like you may want to table this one as well.
Yeah, I mean, really, this is a lot at one time, and I really, you know, the only one I kind of got a good understanding of, and it kind of made a good bit of sense, was the lot line, you know, boundary adjustment procedure is, you know, is something that definitely needed to be looked at, and, you know, I feel that, you know, it definitely could be improved, but there's a lot of other changes thrown in there that I think would need a little more, a little time to digest and get into.
Hi, I'm Deborah Swinson, twelve Ravenwood Street in Hammond, Louisiana. I am going to request that this be tabled until more information can be had, in fact, until at least I can even call the city planner, because I thought maybe he would be here. I got here a little early, not that I would have wanted to dump all this on him, but I have six questions, and one of them are three parts, and I'm a legal secretary thirty-five years, and there's some things in here that are scratched out, so I would just wonder why they were taken out, like notice, seven-day notice. One thing where the planner doesn't, this scratched out about the planner having to show up at a particular meeting, so I wouldn't even have time in the three minutes to address the questions that I have, and I've been tried to be very specific. So, first of all- So first of all, I'm just gonna ask that it be maybe tabled to a meeting where there be more discussion time. And in the meantime, I'm gonna do due diligence and call the planner, and I may get them all answered, so, but I'll still come back to the meeting. So, um, unless we're gonna discuss it tonight, I don't want to belabor with the questions, because I think he would be one of the only ones that could actually answer it. And I would like to reiterate too, that I would like for him to come to these meetings. Um, I come to the meetings when there's topics that I'm concerned about or other topics I feel I should be here. So I just feel like as a citizen and then as he's an employee, that he could maybe be at a few more meetings too.
I'm, I'm just blown away, I'm glad you said, I'm just blown away that we're up here making decisions, voting on things, and the department head of that department is not here to answer any question. I've never heard of that. I don't even know if that takes place anywhere in the state of Louisiana. And so therefore, I'm just blown away by this, and it's a council meeting, it's not a mayor's meeting. It's, it's a council meeting, not a mayor's meeting. And so therefore, the problem is, is that I'm not saying he needs to be here for every meeting that has to do with things that have no relation to him, just like the fire chief or, or anybody else, if it's something to deal with, something, there may be some questions. Last time there was a guns, we were, we were voting on guns for Glocks, and there were some questions raised, and, you know, the answers, luckily, an officer came in and answered some questions, but it'd been nice to have somebody there representing some questions that the public may have before we vote yes, yes, yes.
Right, I agree. Thank you.
Anyone else? All right.
Good evening, council president and everyone in the room. Tracy Washington Wells, sixteen Moni Avenue. I did have some questions, but it sounds like you guys are gonna table the matter, which I hope so. Um, but in reference to, um, and I'm backing up to the previous introduction and moving forward, when there's a reference to another article in an ordinance that's being written up, I would like to see as a citizen that, that be linked on the page as well. For example, you guys referenced Article Six, uh, Section six point three one, and then the new setbacks that are being, um, suggested seem to be a little more restrictive than what's already written. So that would have been one of my questions. And I'm gonna ask my questions, because I may not be available for the next meetings. Um, in regards to the ordinance that we're on now, I just would like to know, why would you remove subsection two point three, point four for approval of minor subdivisions? So the city planner is looking as if he wants to take out the need for two persons to approve a minor subdivision, and he's the only approver. So it seems that the UDC, as it was written, was written to have checks and balances in places. And when you remove those checks and balances and you give one person the authority, then you're gonna have some issues down the line. And who's to say, once he leaves and it's replaced, that the next person is capable to make those decisions like that? So, I mean, I think it's great that you table it to allow the public to come into another meeting to have a deeper dive, as Councilman Divertorio said, to allow sound decisions to be made. Because I read, uh, very well, but this was a lot of information to read in such a short time, because it was posted on your site two weeks ago, and it was just too much to go through in two weeks. And as Mr. Matthews said, they had months to write this out. So I would appreciate as well if you table the matter. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else for this public item?
Al Nicolosi, thirty-six oh seven Highway one ninety west, Hammond, Louisiana. You know, it's pretty, pretty sad whenever the council don't even know, you know, what's going on with the city planner. And, uh, you know, I was looking and reading through this, and it says, you know, everything goes through the mayor. So I think the mayor need to get the city, you know, the city planner down here to meet, meet you people and get, you know, give y'all some information on what y'all need. How could y'all make a decision if y'all don't have all the information? And, uh, you know, just like the lady was saying a while ago, the same thing. Ms. Wells, she, you know, it, who's gonna read all that? Steve, I know you're not worried about reading it. I mean, you know, Mar, I mean, everybody, you know, it takes time to do all these things. I mean, y'all the council people are only here for a few hours, and, uh, the city planner's been here for, what, six months? I have yet to meet him. Now, I've tried to call him three, four, five times, and I've yet to get him. I talked to the secretary, she's, you know, she's the one in charge from what I can understand. And the mayor, I mean, I think the mayor needs to say, okay, let's go down here and have a, a good meeting with these, uh, councilmen and women. So other than that, I'm in favor of, like you said, just to squash it. Thank you.
Anyone else? Hammond City Council regular session agenda, May twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-four, six oh three P M. Roll call, please.
Councilman Leon.
Present.
Councilman Wells.
Present.
Councilman Divertorio.
Present.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Present.
Councilman Andrew.
Present. At this time, I'm gonna ask Reverend Marshall to come up, please, and give us our opening prayer.
Every head bow, every eye close. Eternal God, our heavenly Father, it is once more again, we come before thy divine presence where the hearts and minds feel with thanksgiving. We thank you for blessing our going out as well as our coming in. Lord, we thank you for the life that you've given us. We pray, oh God, that you would come and be in our midst, help us and unify us to be able to work as one on one accord. We'd be so ever grateful if you would send your Holy Spirit to touch each and every one of us to help us in our endeavors to govern this city. We pray, oh God, for the leadership. We pray for these that are citizens that let us have a clear mind and a clear understanding. And Lord, we be also careful in giving you all the praise, the honor, and the glory. For it's in Jesus' name that we pray. Let us all say amen.
For our pledge of allegiance, all veterans and active military, please render the proper salute. Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, I'm asking for an approval of our May fourteenth, twenty twenty-four minutes of our meeting, please.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilman Divertorio.
Aye.
Councilman Wells.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Leon.
Aye.
Final adoption of ordinance, old business number one.
Final adoption of an ordinance to amend the UDC regarding the definition of group living. Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Yes, I'd like to, um, introduce, reintroduce this item for, um, public hearing and with the suggested changes by the planning and zoning. Hold on.
Well, yeah, yeah, Councilman, so actually, on the agenda, under introduction of an ordinance number two, is, is where the recommended action by the planning and zoning is on the agenda?
Oh, okay.
So yours, Councilwoman, e- either would be-
I see, okay, I, I move to remove this item from the agenda.
You can remove it from the agenda, yes.
Second.
Councilman Divertorio.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Leon.
Aye.
Councilman Wells.
Aye.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye. Gotcha, okay, all right. Final adoption of new business.
Final adoption of an ordinance of the Hammond City Council amending the Unified Development Code, providing for a supplemental use article of the Unified Development Code and establishing its general provisions specific to provisions for accessory buildings and uses and specific provisions for accessory garages. Mayor Pete?
I'm gonna make a motion that we table this item until we could, uh, set a meeting between us and the planning and zoning to work through this together, to get the answers to the questions that are being put out on the table, and to come to a resolution together in one group to move forward.
Second.
Councilman Divertorio.
Aye.
Councilman Wells.
Aye.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Leon.
Aye.
Number two.
Final adoption of an ordinance of the Hammond City Council, City Council amending the Unified Development Code clarifying minor subdivision review procedures, lot boundary adjustment procedure, related appeal procedures, withdrawing obsolete procedural diagrams and directing the city planner through the mayor to make new procedural diagrams available to the public. Mayor?
Okay, I make a motion that we table this item as well until a meeting can be set between the council and planning and zoning.
Second.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Divertorio.
Aye.
Councilman Wells.
Aye.
Councilman Leon.
Aye.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye. Mr. Matthews, what I do is, I will be making contact with Mr., uh, and I went, went blank. Uh, with the city planner along with, uh, Mr. Douglas. And, and I'll send out some dates among the councils to see what dates are gonna work in the upcoming week where we can sit down and schedule this meeting. Introduction of ordinance, number one.
Introduction of an ordinance to amend the city of Hammond's budget for the fiscal year twenty twenty-three through twenty twenty-four in accordance with the procedures in section five dash zero three of the city's charter. Mayor?
Uh, we do this annually every year after the audit has been completed and to rebalance the, uh, beginning fund balances. Uh, in doing that, we will transfer three hundred and fifty thousand from the general fund to the workers' comp general liability insurance fund, uh, which had an increase to it, uh, which should be an increase for, I think we said, two or three years. We're now in a, um, in a fund where we are, are part ownership. Uh, what do they call that? They call that, um, self-insured fund. So we're now, uh, part of a self-insured fund with the city, and that rate should come down within the third and fifth year. Uh, also, we're gonna add a million dollars to the sales tax revenue. We were one point four over, uh, our budget, so that's a good thing. We're gonna keep four hundred in to finish off the year. Uh, we're gonna remove a half a million, five hundred thousand from garbage collection fees, which we assumed would be approved by the council, but did not get approved, so we cannot recognize that for revenue. And that's, that's it.
Anyone from the public have any questions on this item? Anyone from the council have any questions on this item? I make a motion to introduce.
Second.
Councilman Leon.
Aye.
Councilman Wells.
Aye.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilman Divertorio.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Number two.
Introduction of an ordinance of the city, of, I'm sorry, introduction of the ordinance for Hammond City Council to amend the Unified Development Code defining group living facility, group care facility, homeless shelter, providing for inclusive zoning of each and defining conditional uses. Mayor?
Uh, as Carly said earlier, uh, this was, uh, an effort to clarify definitions. Uh, definitions being, group living facility means a residential facility providing long-term room and board to a group of six persons. Group living facilities are allowed in, in use in the R M three zones and a conditional use in M X N zones. Group care facilities means a residential facility providing room and board to a group of more than six who are not able to care for themselves due to a disability or age with at least one full supervisory resident on staff. And group care facilities are allowed in R M three, M X N, M X C, and C N zones and a conditional use in commercial highway zones. Homeless shelter means a specialized social service providing temporary housing to those without a permanent residence, and homeless shelters are a conditional use in a commercial highway C H zone. Uh, Carly, would you like to elaborate any?
Yeah, I think we talked about it pretty well, and I didn't realize when I said this earlier, all those things that we saw are actually hyperlinked in this agenda. So you can see, there's a, a, a letter from the city planner explaining what this does with some good summaries, and, um, so that'll give everyone time to review it. As we said, I'm gonna ask that this is introduced, um, for June twenty-fourth, which is a, a Monday council meeting. We have a special setting, but I don't know if we have public comment on it.
Anyone have any questions or concerns on this item? Please step to the mic, name and address.
Mickey Hubbell, Brazil Saxon Wilson, three oh one Main Street. So Northlake Coalition, I represent them. Um, they purchased their property November twenty-second, two thousand twenty-three. When they purchased the property, they had professionals handling it. It wasn't our firm, it was somebody else. They had a title company. Um, they had a survey done. Um, they, uh, the zoning ordinance that's in effect right now is, uh, under group living. When you look at the definition of it, it says interim or permanent residential facility as opposed to a lodging or medical treatment facility that provides room and board to a group of persons who are not a family in quotes, as that term is defined in this ordinance, whether or not the facility is operated for profit or charges for the services it offers. And it goes on to say what's not included. So they, they bought the property, um, and paid about four million dollars for it, as I remember. They had a public showing tour of the facility. It was well-publicized, newspaper articles, et cetera. Um, that was on January the nineteenth. On January twenty-third, the text amendment, it was the first draft, one-page text amendment, to specifically call out a definition for homeless shelters. I've looked at other ordinances and other parishes, like East Baton Rouge, I mean, they don't have one for homeless shelter. They don't have a definition for homeless shelter. It looks to me that homeless shelter would, would fall under group living when you look at the definition as it's described right now. The, the abstract attached to the, some, the recommendation to the city council by the city planner, uh, draws a conclusion that the current definition is unclear. I don't know that I agree with that. I mean, everybody's entitled to their opinion, maybe it is, maybe it's not. But all I do know is that when they bought the property, they believed they could use the property for a homeless shelter based on the ordinance that was in place at the time. And two things have changed. One is a text amendment that specifically defines a homeless shelter and also puts it in a classification of conditional use. We don't know what those conditions are. Uh, I don't know that there would be some overburdened some conditions for them to utilize a property as a homeless shelter. I mean, that's for another day. Uh, but it is conditional, and, and it appeared to be of right, in our opinion, when they bought the property. So it subjects them to approval by the city council and the city council imposing conditions on them to operate a homeless shelter. Now, when it, when it also, this proposed ordinance talks, it has an attachment A, and it talks about conditional use. And I really don't understand, it, 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 it talks about restricted conditional use and expanded conditional use. And which one of those applies in this case? Or does it apply? You know, I mean, because right now, is, is, is that applied to the group living as it's defined now before this new ordinance is proposed, or does it apply afterwards? I just, you know, maybe you can shed some light on it, but, um, because when you talk about expanded conditional use in this attachment A, it talks about public safety, health, welfare, et cetera, and which, which is the legislative branch's duty and obligation to protect the citizens, et cetera. There's also, it talks about traffic, it talks about a lot of different things in here. It gives three examples and requires a permit. So we don't know what that is. So the point is, is right now, when they bought the property, they didn't have this, and if this passes, then they will have other requirements. And they may or may not be overburdened some, we don't know, but we'll see. Uh, if they are overburdened some, there are Fair Housing Act cases that deal specifically with this scenario where the ordinance gets changed and it makes it prohibitive to operate the property for the intended use. And I'm not saying that's being done right now, because it's premature, but we need to, I'm just asking y'all to- And I'm not saying that's being done right now because it's premature, but we need to, I'm just asking y'all to consider that. I think that's, that's the extent of what I want to say. The other, the other, there is one other point, and it's been public. It's been all over, people talking about it, that the other opposition to this project has been the position that they don't have access to their property. Well, New Seal Lane has been, been there for years. I've looked at the nineteen sixty-one survey. I think that could be called a statutory dedication. It's a conventional servitude that was granted by the owner back then. There are many ways to establish a servitude. You have, you have implicit dedication, you have tacit dedication, you got conventional servitudes granted in a deed, you have statutory dedication on a plat, and you have apparent servitude just from the use. If it's a private servitude, you have just from use of, of ten years. You can acquire that through, through acquisitive prescription. Um, the other thing is there is also provision out of Civil Code for an enclosed estate. There's public policy that property should not, or will not be taken out of commerce. And, and so if it's concluded that they don't have public, a public access, or they don't have a private access, then, then our Civil Code requires the adjoining landowners to grant them a servitude of passage over their land to the, to the nearest public road. Now, I, I, I think everybody's aware that the adjoining landowners have put up a blockade. They've put up a concrete barrier, one of them has, and others have put up some equipment, and they can't access the property through New Seal Lane. So, that's being dealt with. We've referred it to the title company. They're looking at it, and, and they'll, they'll be in conclusion on it. Or there'll be some kind of action taken to, to get that removed, because they will get access at some point. I mean, the law provides for it. So, I don't think that's a valid, uh, concern, uh, for the city council to make that a condition. Right now, they've applied for an occupational license, and what's come back to them is that they need to prove that they have access. And we don't think that's right. I mean, if you take a legal position on it that they don't have access, then we don't think it's right. I understand they need to have access. So, that's going to be dealt with. Okay? I just wanted to inform you all of that so that you can consider that. Okay?
Thank you.
I understand that you don't think that's right, and I understand that professionals were involved. I understand that title companies have title insurance, and it may be going to that point because there's nothing that anyone has brought to us about clear access. Now, what you're saying could happen and may happen, and possibly will happen. I will, that, that's, that's what we'll wait to see. But at this point, you're right. There is no access, legal access, sign-off from anyone around that property to give them access to it. So, if what you're saying is true, you know, I guess we'll see that in the future. But I will tell you, they didn't come to us prior to coming here. They bought the property. Then they came to us. You know, some of the things that you can work through or tell people may, may have problems with would have come up in a conversation before that. No one generally ever comes into the City of Hammond or probably any other municipality or parish and not go to economic development folks or the mayor or the parish president or whoever he has designated in place and not talk to them about what they're getting ready to do. But that's just, that's my comment on the access, and you may be right.
I think they did talk before they bought the property, and I let them speak to that. And I didn't say that they don't have access. I believe they do have legal access. It may be, as a practical matter, the access is obstructed right now unlawfully, and that's our position, and that'll have to be determined.
Yes, sir. And I mean, we have been talking, Tamara Denell built homes for Quad Area for years and talked about a possible homeless shelter. Um, we also had another individual who has a shop on Mooney Avenue, right on the corner, that had talked about possibly doing it. But no one's ever come up with a plan. This was brought up to us after it was purchased. And you have owners around that property that aren't giving them access, so that's something that you will have to weed out.
I hear, I hear you, and, and I think the planning commission lays it out in their abstract.
Over your three minutes.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you.
I appreciate what the planning commission has done.
I just would like to say that, um, I believe it was in nineteen forty-three, housing is a basic human right. It is a basic human right. You have vouchers that-
Ma'am, could you come to the mic where everybody can hear you, please?
Vouchers that are given, that are hoteling people regularly, that's been going on, that's still going on to this day. People don't choose to be homeless. They become homeless. It's not just drug addicts. It's not just criminals. It could be anybody, anytime, anyplace, anywhere. It seems to me that these ordinances, these changes are just an attempt to deter us, the organization, the homeless shelter, from opening. There are people who need this. I currently know of a woman who is pregnant, about to be delivering a baby, June third, who's been living in a tent that could utilize this. I deal with people who are elderly, who have lost their husbands, who are raising grandchildren, who are trying to provide for their grandchildren, who are living in cars. This is something that's necessary, and I'm begging you to find a way to work this out. There are people that need housing, and they need it now. It's a basic human right. So, please, anything and everything that you can do to try and help this project along, it would be greatly appreciated.
Excuse me. What, uh, what brought y'all to that, that, that hotel? What, what, what brought y'all to that location? Did y'all have any discussion with that or anything? Like, what, what made, out of all the locations, what, what made y'all pick that location curiosity?
Ms. Tony's going to come up to the mic.
Excuse me. What was your name?
Sheila Rosario Reteef.
Tony Jackson, one three one four one, Old Baton Rouge Highway, Hammond, Louisiana. So, what brought us to that, that, um, location is that it was for sale. And, and we wanted the model of a hotel because that was, so that, um, what, when we talk, talk about it being a non-congregational, uh, shelter, it means that there's individual rooms. And so, there was nothing else that we, that needed to be done to that area because the hotel was damaged for Hurricane Ida. But the previous owner had fixed that part. And so, we, we wanted to have it, um, in a way where families could be able to stay, where individuals would be able to stay. And so, the hotel model, which is a model that is across America, um, is a good model for, for that reason. And it's, it's, you know, and we're doing other social services and transitional, and other housing there also. But that's what dropped, we wanted a hotel. So, that's, that is, is why. And then the, the other thing, back in twenty nineteen, there was a discuss, there was a meeting with, um, here, right here, with Lacy and some other organizations about a homeless shelter in Hammond back in February of twenty nineteen. And so, this is something that has been discussed in Hammond with other, with organizations and stuff for years about having, because we saw the need, the, and because there, you know, nothing has happened on that part is, is now, you know, you're starting to see more people that are out there homeless, and you seeing more of a need. At, at the time, we, you know, it, and I, maybe that's why it was not, um, uh, you know, so much with some, even though Saint Vincent de Paul, they were very interested in having a shelter here in, in, in Hammond because they saw the need. So, but, but, you know, in answer to your question, it, it is because it was available and it was the model that we wanted. A model of a hotel where it could be individual rooms. We can be able to have, have space for, um, for families because we have more families. I did a grant for, well, um, for a homeless grant, and there's more families that are in need of it than there are individuals. But we want to be able to be equal for, for everyone.
So, so it was on the market, with a brokerage, it was on the market for sale, or?
It was on the market for sale. Do you want to?
Yeah, that's correct. So, we, um-
Name, you name and address, please.
My name's Amanda Stapleton. I'm representing the North Lake Homeless, um, Coalition, um, at the Baymont Inn, forty-two, three oh nine South Morrison Boulevard. Um, so, we actually partnered with the Louisiana Housing Corporation, um, in twenty twenty, so from April of twenty twenty to January of twenty twenty-one, where they bought a block of rooms, placed people there so they could safely shelter in place at that location. Um, and we provided the supportive services. We brought in meals, and we moved people out into the community um, as apartments became, units became available. And so, it was a, it was a successful model at that location, and the property was listed for sale thereafter.
Ma'am, I got, uh, two questions. The city planner, have y'all met with the city planner?
We have not.
Because see, if I'm not mistaken, we're not the people y'all need to fight. We just listen. But you can see the problem that we're having. I heard you say, Ms. Tony, you met with Lacy. See, a lot of these meetings, and I tell everybody that, I don't like private meetings. When you have private meetings, certain people say certain thing. And you, as you can see, Ms. Lacy nowhere around. The city planner, we probably didn't even have a city planner in place at the time when all this was taking place. Oh, twenty nineteen, we had a city planner.
Maybe for very little. I mean, it'd been about two years that we hadn't had one, and then we had one that was there for a couple of months. So, I mean, we really, we didn't really have one for a while. That's why we added all this to moratorium to protect our time because we were waiting on a city planner before we make big decisions on big developments, and planning is key. And I don't see mu- much planning that was involved in that location, which, that's, that's my opinion for one way or another. And, uh, you know, I, I think a little more thought process could have been taken, and, uh, you said it was on the market. I mean, I may have overlooked it. Um, that's what I do for a living, and it may, it may have been on the market, and I, I didn't see it. But, uh, you know, uh, I just, you know, I didn't even know it was for sale, so.
It was on the market. Um, I don't know the exact date that it was on the market, but by the time that we applied for the grant, it was no longer listed on the market, and so I called the owner and asked him if it was still for sale.
Yeah, because I'm-
I could, I, I'm sure it was probably twenty twenty-one-
Yeah.
-that it was listed for sale.
Because I'm saying this here, I heard Ms. Tony say she met with Lacy, and this-
There, there was a meeting here.
Okay.
There was a, um, there was a meeting that was called to see what the interest would be for a shelter in the City of Hammond. And so, that, you know, like I said, there were other organizations that, that came, Red Cross, Saint Vincent de Paul and other organizations, and they expressed the interest of having a hotel here, I mean, a, a homeless shelter.
Yeah.
Because of, of where Hammond is, um, because, and because they saw the need.
Okay, and I, you pretty much answered my question about you never sit there, y'all never actually talk to the city planner. Okay, and I'm saying this here because a lot of things take place in that office that we don't know nothing about. And we're not the ones that's fighting against you all. We just say yes and no. That's all we do. And y'all know that. You know that, Ms. Tony. So, we're not the problem. The problem is, go back to the beginning and see where all started from. Now, I can't say this here, and I mean this here. I see new rules coming about that shouldn't be coming about, and I don't know if it's towards y'all or what it's towards. I don't care for that, and I say that on the record. So, what's taking place, it shouldn't even be here. All this here should have started in the city planner building. And if you all start going to that building like you piled up in here, I guarantee you can get a result because, see, when they really don't want to do nothing, they'll pass it through. That's the problem you all having now. And you and I have talked before, ma'am, the problem y'all having now, they done passed it through. And so, all the ones that was involved in the beginning, yeah, they gonna keep their mouth closed that they don't want the public to know who is who and what is what. That's why when I talk, I call names. And so, what y'all need to do, the ones that started all of this, the ones that said this, that this is a good idea, that's a good idea, especially if they representing the City of Hammond or Tansport Parish, get them to come to every meeting y'all have. And we done talked about this before, because I done met with you all, and I told y'all this in the beginning. Get with the ones who started this. From the first dollar y'all receive, get with them. Bring them out. Because why they hiding now? And that's what I say they hiding. Whoever y'all talk to, bring them out. Let them come up and say this and say that, because this, it's not our fight, and we're not up here to fight. We can listen to y'all till two o'clock in the morning. Still and all, ain't nothing going to get solved tonight by none of us. And that's the truth. And that's why I say the ones who started this, bring them on board. Bring them out. Get them involved. That's the only way you gonna solve it. Thank you so much.
Once again, Tamara Denell came to us and spoke about homeless shelters. Beth LaFarge came to us and spoke about homeless shelters. You came and spoke about homeless shelters as they did. Never once till you purchased this place said, where are you going to put it? Did you?
No.
I didn't have those conversations.
You should have. You should have, because you put Tony on the line when it comes to buying the place, and I don't think that's fair to Tony. Bottom line is, you didn't come to this city and tell us where you were purchasing. You did what others did and came to us and said, what do you think about a homeless shelter? And had discussions about it. Didn't say where you were going. What you let us all know, including the parish, that you were coming here is when you did the open house. That's when we got the- Believe me. Look, and also, this right here, these changes, these changes don't truly affect this homeless shelter. What they're doing, this is cleaning up this. What affects the homeless shelters with the gentleman stated earlier, which is what he's going to have to deal with, I guess, in court, and that is, you have no access. No one that owns property around you is giving you access, legal access. The title company, you know, did he, did he not do his job properly? But you will figure that out, sir.
Last comment.
Thank you. My name is Chris Wazcarver, uh, four two four four three Enterprise Land in Hammond. Um, I'd like to thank the council for recognizing the defect in their code and making, um, a, a real effort to clean it up and to address this issue for the concerned people that are here today. But I will point out that you need no better evidence of the problem that we have with this project than what you heard from the attorney of this project, because it's not only you that recognize the defect in your code. It's the other people outside of this parish that want this facility in our parish and in our town. They targeted us because there was a defect. You just heard this man is brilliant, articulate, smart, an established attorney. To think for one minute that they didn't know what our codes were? To think for one minute that they didn't know that there was an access problem to this, this property? It's just, it's too much of a leap. They targeted this property because it was unprotected in many ways. And so, I would suggest to you that as you go about your work, councilwoman, cleaning this up with your ordinance, that you don't look at just the requirements or what, what brings our ordinance into a line with the surrounding communities, but also what reflects the needs of this community. There are ladies here of great compassion, no argument at all. But I have seen great compassion in this community time and time again. It is the scale and the location of this project that we have an objection to. We don't have a problem of this magnitude, and this will be an opportunity for someone to export their problems into our community. And they did this, they did this knowing that there was an opportunity for them to do exactly that. So, I, I, um, will tell you that we'll be looking forward to the work that you come up with, and hopefully we can find the right solution for our community. Thank you.
Thank you. All right.
I just want to reiterate the fact that during COVID, it was operating as a homeless shelter, and there were no issues. During COVID, it was operating as a homeless shelter with no issues.
So, I guess, so y'all had, y'all had a permit for that, I guess, or for, did y'all have?
That was the last, the guy was the last one to speak. No, the guy was the last one to speak.
That's it right there. That's it. That's it. Can I get a motion on this particular item that's on the floor, please?
Motion to introduce for a public hearing on June twenty-fourth.
Second.
Councilman Andrews?
Aye.
Councilman Divatario?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilman Wells?
Aye.
Councilman Leon?
Aye.
Okay, public hearing will be held on June twenty-fourth for this item, and the item before that, introduction number one, the public hearing will be held on June- the public hearing will be held on June the eleventh at five-thirty.
Resolution number one.
Resolution approving the restoration tax abatement program application for Sweet Haven LLC concerning the historic building renovation at two-two-three East Thomas Street that was approved by the Louisiana Division of Historic Preservation. Mayor?
This building is on the corner of East Thomas and Cherry Street. This is the old Danton Building, purchased by Matt Hunt. Uh, there's a restoration tax abatement program that you can apply for ten years. Matt has applied for five years. This just freezes the property tax for five years. Uh, he is putting, uh, his investment on his property is a million dollars plus. And, uh, what this does is just freezes the property taxes for five years to help him, uh, recoup and get this thing into commerce.
Anyone from the public on this resolution?
Al Nicolosi, thirty-six oh-seven Highway one ninety west. I'm just concerned with, uh, Sweet Haven LLC. I don't know who they are. Do y'all have any idea who Sweet Haven LLC is?
Matt Hunt. They own Popeyes Fried Chicken for years and years here locally around the area.
So, they getting a tax credit because of, uh, this preservation? They, they remodeling and stuff like that? Is that why they getting a tax credit for five years, you said?
That's what he's asking for, yes, sir, five years.
Have you decided on that, or does the council approve that?
So, th- this is a, this is an abatement to keep the property taxes lower for us for five years. It's a program through the state. It has to be approved by the council, which we are saying, we're okay with your property taxes staying the level they are. It's not like he doesn't have to pay property taxes. It just doesn't increase to the value of all the money he's putting into it for five years. After five years, he's paying the property tax at the value of the property at that time.
It's just an incentive that they offer in that, in that area to motivate development and, and revitalization for, for that, you know, for the area, so.
This is approved by the state. It just needs to be approved by the council.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
So, Mr. Matt, you here? Could you come up and speak about it, please?
Matthew Hunt, fifty-seven White Oak Court, Hammond. We are doing a major renovation on a hundred-year-old building. It's in a historic district. The money we're putting into it versus the rental income that we'll have, we'll have a lower.
Rate of return.
Lower rate of return for a while, and this is a state program. I didn't make it up. It's, it's out there. My accountant, my architect told me about it. I applied for it last year, and, um, we're nearing the end of the project, and now's when it needs to be approved locally.
It's looking, looking good over there. Uh, glad to see you're bringing it back to life and, uh, excited to see it finished. And, uh, things will come out really nice over there. Appreciate that.
Thank you, Mr. Matt. And one of my biggest concern be is I lose a lot in District Three. And it have nothing to do with you. I lose a lot in District Three far as trying to do things for the kids, for the park. And I'm saying that because just looking over the budget, it's not, not one dime going to Mooney Park, and that's, this have nothing to do with you. And now, you tell me about a program that go, that's from the state, but the city, the councilmen have to approve of it. And this one of the issues that I be having, every time we take a dollar away, or every time we let somebody not pay one dollar, this make my park, Mooney Park, come up short of dollars. And like I said, it have nothing to do with you. The budget already been put out, and not one dime going to Mooney Park. And that's what I don't like about this here, you know. We give him a break for five years, not ten years. But see how Mooney Park is missing out? Mr. Mayor, I'm talking to you now.
Divine, we actually have money in for Mooney Park. It's not in this budget. You already have money in the line of account.
No, Mr. Mr. Mayor, they have no money, and we're not gonna go back and forth, but I'm just saying, that's why I don't like these programs, 'cause they don't have no money in this budget for Mooney Park. You didn't put no money in Mooney Park in last year's budget. I'm just going by what I'm reading and what I see. That's why I say that. I'm not talking about money from the past. I'm talking about two years in a row, you have no money, and yet, this gentleman standing before us looking for a five-year credit, you know. That's what I'm talking about.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else have any?
Let, let me just say that that building hasn't produced any income, very minimal, uh, for the previous tenant that just occupied part of the first floor. This will, um, create a lot more rental income and, um, thus more sales.
Sales tax.
Sales tax, tax, uh, you know, the, uh, the downstairs commercial property will employ some people and, um.
And you'll continue to pay, you'll continue to pay the tax that you pay right now. You just don't have an increase.
Exactly.
Yeah, once again, sir, it's nothing, it's nothing about you. And I think when I talk, people take it personal, but I do take it personal when it come to District Three. And so, it's nothing against you. It's the city that I'm dealing with. It's nothing against you. But they say all the time, when you, when you throw something out there, just look and see who the stick gonna hit, 'cause when the stick hits somebody, those be the first ones to holler and love to talk about it.
Anyone else on this particular item? Make a motion, please.
Make a motion, approve.
Second.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilman Divatario.
Aye.
Councilman Leon.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Wells.
No. Resolution number two.
A resolution to authorize the mayor to enter into a moratorium, I'm, I'm sorry, a memorandum of agreement between the Jackson Parish, Jefferson Parish Sheriff's Office and the Hammond Police Department for the Gulf Coast High-Intensity Drug Trafficking Area Regional Task Force. Mayor?
Uh, this is an annual agreement that, uh, authorizes HPD participation in a regional task force focused on drug trafficking. Officers earn overtime, and the grant pays for their salaries and their, and their time trying to keep drugs off the streets. That task force makes it a whole lot safer when they go in and try to take care of folks and infiltrate people who are drug trafficking, you know, whatever else is going on out there.
Anyone from the public on this line item? Any questions from anyone on the council? I make a motion to approve.
Second.
Councilman Divatario.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Wells.
Aye.
Councilman Leon.
Aye.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye. Resolution number three.
A resolution, one, supporting the submission of a twenty-seven thousand five hundred dollar grant application to the Patrick Lee Bulletproof Vest Partnership to purchase new and replacement body armor for Hammond police officers. And two, supporting a cash ma- cash match of twenty-seven thousand five hundred dollars from the Hammond Police Department. Mayor?
Uh, the cost is estimated at fifty-five thousand. Uh, the Hammond, uh, part of the grant match will be from the millage. Uh, when we give vests to officers, um, they're mandatorily need, must be used and worn. Every five years, we trade them in, and so that's what this program is a part of.
Anyone from the public have a question or concern on this line item? Anyone from the council? I make a motion to approve.
Second.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilman Divatario.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Wells.
Aye.
Councilman Leon.
Aye.
Resolution number four.
A resolution, one, supporting the submission of a one-point-five-million-dollar grant application to the Lake Ponchatrain Basin Restoration Program for lift station and forced main improvements. There is no match requirement. Mayor?
Uh, this is a bid that came in that was a million and a half over that we denied. Um, there is a grant out there from Ponchation Restoration Program that, uh, has the possibility of us getting one-point-five million to supplement our budget on this project. And so, uh, I would suggest that the, uh, council please approve.
Anyone from the public have any questions on this particular resolution? Anyone from the council? I make a motion to approve.
Second.
Councilman Leon.
Aye.
Councilman Wells.
Aye.
Councilman Divatario.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye. Resolution number five.
A resolution to review and ratify bids received five-twenty-three-twenty-four for drainage improvements, FY twenty-twenty-four, project number four-two-zero-one-two-four-zero-four. Mitchell Roniger.
Good evening, everybody. This is Mr. Roniger. He is a senior design engineer with Spangl Engineering. Some of you have met him, some of you have not, but he handled this project. I'm gonna turn it over to him.
Good evening, y'all. Mitchell Roniger. Yes, uh, we had six responsive bidders submit for the drainage twenty-twenty-four, um, improvements. Um, low bidder came in under the estimated, uh, construction cost. That low bid was eight-hundred-and-ninety-six thousand one-hundred-and-three dollars. The qualified, uh, licensed contractor, um, so it looks like we'll be able to move forward with that. Y'all have any questions for me?
Can you tell us briefly what work this is?
Yes, ma'am. Um, approx- uh, five locations for drainage improvements, uh, North Cherry, between East Michigan and, um, the Drainage Lateral W-two-dash-L-six. It's approximately fifteen-hundred feet. Installing subsurface drainage in preparation for sidewalk installation. Uh, South Magnolia, um, street, we'll be doing approximately nine-hundred linear feet of, um, subsurface drainage installation in preparation for sidewalks. Also, on South Pine, um, street, we'll be doing approximately six-hundred linear feet, subsurface drainage installation, um, sidewalk preparation. Westdale subdivision, we doing, um, some drainage improvements along Belfast Drive and between Belfast Drive, uh, leading out towards Morrison Boulevard. Also be doing some pipe cleaning in the vicinity of Dennis, uh, Drive and Nabry Drive over there. And, um, to alleviate some drainage issues they've had over there. I drove over there a few weeks ago when we had a big rain, and it was.
Serious.
Pretty bad.
Yeah, it was pretty serious over there, yeah.
These improvements really should, um, help see some, some improvement over there. Yes, sir. Uh, the final location was Green Lawn Drive, approximately three-hundred, uh, linear feet of drainage improvements there, uh, to alleviate some drainage issues there.
So, that's all the drainage projects for, for this year that's coming up?
Fiscal year twenty-four.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Current year.
Yeah.
So, uh, Mr. Chuck. I see we don't have Mooney Avenue on there. What's going on with Mooney Avenue?
Mooney Avenue's on, on the, on this current contract that we already have under contract. It's under being worked, they're working on now.
Oh, just hang guide to it, so there's something that's going on right?
That's why we waited so late to bid it. We have a drainage contractor still going on from twenty-three.
All right.
It's still out there working, so this has kinda got pushed to the end of fiscal year, but I have no choice. I gotta bid it out. So, there's still some twenty-three work on it. It's Harold Street, Harold Street Two is already under contract.
Cause I noticed.
It's been started yet, but it's under contract.
Okay.
It will be done.
Okay, I noticed some on District Four went in there, but that might be that they haven't started those yet. Okay.
Yes, that's possible.
Is possible or, yeah?
I don't know where you're asking.
Okay, okay.
Okay, well, let me ask this here question here. I heard you say Pine Street.
Yes, sir.
So, South Pine. Okay, give me.
Second to Phoenix Square.
Yes, that's what I need, because, yes. So, from Second Avenue to Phoenix Square.
Same thing with Magnolia.
Okay.
That's nine-hundred feet. This oughta be the same length.
Yeah, no, no.
I see some of it's already covered on the.
Yeah, okay, so look, you don't have to talk so fast, Mr. Chuck. I'm glad you up here. I'm glad to see you tonight. But I'm saying this, and this is why I'm asking. I need the streets because somehow, when we start a project in District Three, somehow it don't be clear. So, now, this here clear, and I got a, I got a good understanding of what street we talking about, and it's from Second Avenue to Phoenix.
That's correct.
Yes, okay. See how easy that is? Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Al Nicolosi, uh. Y'all, you said you bidding out to five? You got five bids or something like that? Is that what you were saying?
I'm sorry?
Yes, sir, we had six responsive.
I can't read all that, Chuck. You know, I got bad eyes.
Six responsive bidders that came back, yes, sir. Six responsive bidders that came back, yes, sir.
Okay, well, the reason I'm asking is I just wanted to know, uh, were they local people or, or where they, where they, that's gonna be doing the work?
They gonna be handling the work?
No, I'll have to let them answer. Cause people need to hear this. These are public works jobs. They have to be bonded for a million dollars. So, there aren't but about four or five local contractors can bond a job of that size, and they all bid it. Uh, but we're a public agency. We have to give the lowest responsive and responsible bidder, and this particular contractor has done work. It's Arbor. Used to be, uh, Industrial Enterprises. Y'all might have heard of them. Dwight Smith is retired. This is his son, and he's starting another company called Arbor. And they're getting the job. They're excellent contractors. They do employ people that live in Hammond, actually. Some of their labors and superintendents live here. But that's kind of the process where it's, it's not like we can go handpick local people and just give it to them. As much as I encourage them, and I help those local bidders, uh, you know, I'm not gonna name any names. A lot of the local bidders come to me, and we try to get jobs for them that they can work on, but these, we're forced to follow state bid law here. I didn't know that.
So, quickly, I have a question. Uh, Tracy Wells, six-Tamone Avenue. Councilwoman, um, Gonzalez asked a very good question. How many projects are part of this drainage improvement, which is five? But when you all approved the budget last year for one-point-eight-four-five million dollars, it was nine projects on the budget. So, what's the difference between what you all are voting on during the budget time versus the work that's actually being done? Thank you.
Thank you. It's a great question. I'm sorry I didn't make that clear. Some of the twenty-three, twenty-four stuff that was not done, we added to the current contract because they're ready to take on more work. Harold Drive was not supposed to be done till that, right now. Harold Drive's already been placed, oh, that's an example. The Westdale stuff was already supposed to be done. That added to that contract.
Timber lane, rear timber lane, rear lathe, all that.
It's not approved till this coming New Year. It wasn't approved last year.
It should have been on there. It was moved. It was moved. That's, that's, see, that's, that's the thing. It's all, it was, it was moved, yeah.
You asked me that two months ago.
Yeah, it was supposed to be on there, yeah.
And I can't, I can't.
Yeah.
Answer.
We amended it and put it on there, so.
The adopted budget that I have, it is not on there. So, let's, we'll talk about that privately, I guess. I don't know why it wasn't on there. So, there are about, of the nine, four or five were accelerated and put under the, added by, to Richard Price's current contract, 'cause he was way ahead of schedule. The Elm Drive stuff, you remember Elm Drive? We added that to Richard Price's contract. So, you don't see it in that list, 'cause it's already under contract with the current contractor. There's nothing been left off that was approved of the nine projects, small project. First Avenue hasn't been done yet, but that's gonna be added to Richard Price. That's a special, that's a special problem. First Avenue's that sunk down street by Mary's Alley, and I'm gonna try to get Richard Price, 'cause they're good contractors, to walk the job, come up with some quantities, and come up with the bid price and add it to his contract, but it's gonna be done.
Yeah, but in the process, by you saying that, Mary Alley, I would like to be a part of it.
Uh, you told me that, and I won't forget it. You told me about Harold, too.
Yes.
We'll do this, when we come up with the solution, you'll be the first to know.
Yes, thank you.
Jay Pittman might be the first to know, but you'll be second.
Okay.
Sorry for the confusing. Thank you about that. Tracy, I, I didn't mention that we had other projects already.
But, but, but you see how, you, you see how we have issues here, and the issues that we have, Mr. Chuck, is stuff be added on, and it wasn't on the board. Uh, uh, it wasn't a part of it. So, that's why we have so many issues, and then when we talk about, and God knows, I'm always talking about District Three. We talk about District Three, you and I talk, but yet I see something different taking place, and that's why I always wanna be a part of it.
It'll never be different. Just might be timing.
Okay, well, time, we gonna say time.
Timing, 'cause.
Okay.
I'm not gonna change whatever's on that ordinance and whatever we talk about, it's gonna happen. It might not happen the next morning, it might not even happen the next month, but it's gonna happen.
No, no, I know it ain't gonna happen. I know it ain't gonna happen the next morning, but, so I know that because.
One time we did driveway, took a driveway up the next morning.
Yeah, but I'm just saying this here, when it come to District Three, I have to make sure District Three get every dollar that they deserve. And now that you up here, and I'm glad you up here, I would like to see how much money for capital improvement, how much money actually being spent in District Three?
I have no way of giving you that information.
And I'm not saying tonight. I'm not saying tonight.
Saying anytime. I don't divide any of these projects by district. I'll take the. I'll take the projects you give me, we bid them out, and then we do the work.
Yeah, okay.
We don't chisel up every contract to do every year and figure out who got what for what, cause it's never gonna be right. Some people get a lot more, Carly got a ton of work last year, she's getting none this year, on Old Covington, so, I don't know how I can do that.
But it's a.
Try, I never mind, I.
Yeah, but, but see, I asked for this here when I first got up here. And I understand why it haven't been done, but I'mma say it again, District Three has started coming up short. District Three got so many issues that nobody wanna talk about. District Three need help. That's what I'm talking about. You know, for every road we ride down, and I'mma say this here, I don't wanna ride with nobody, I don't wanna walk with nobody. To like, uh, the city planner, Sam and I went over there, stayed over there a whole hour. Not one note he wrote. I told Sam, I'm not sitting down talking to nobody else that don't take notes. So, I'm saying this here, Mr. Chuck, to you, to the city, everybody, I don't have time to waste. I can't keep saying the same thing over and over again, and see, now what goes on in District Three? I got to keep saying this here, we just voted on the police going to Jefferson Parish helping out with drugs. We got drugs in our area that we need help with. Yeah, you right, Mr. Sam. So, that's all I'm saying, Mr. Chuck, I need to see something being done in District Three. I don't wanna see two million dollars, yeah, these little special project, two million dollars. I never have a private meeting, everybody know that. We talking about public money. I need to see things being done in District Three. And if I offend you, I apologize.
You not offending me.
Okay, well, I need to see something.
I do what, when you, when you give me a budget, that's what's gonna happen.
Okay, and that's what I need, I just need to see projects.
June sixth, and we'll have a whole list.
Being done in District Three.
And you tell me what goes on that list, and I don't have to vote.
Okay.
I give you the, they give me the needs, I give you the dollar amount, you tell me where they belong in your priorities. And that's how I do it, I'm not, I'm not trying to belittle what you're saying, I understand your frustration.
Oh, no, I never let you or nobody else belittle me now, nobody, so, watch, watch, no, real stuff. I respect you. Whatever me and I talk about in the truck is being the truck. But, you have to watch what you say, cause I'mma watch what I say. So, you know, and I will take it personal, so, watch what you say, and I'mma watch what I say.
Nothing personal, so I don't.
Yeah, no, I will, though.
Well.
Uh, I definitely, I definitely would like to give it to you, because it seems like some of the projects keep getting shuffled around from year to year.
Keep going behind, back, back, back.
Some reason, it's, it's changed, and I know, you know, I'm not, I'm not arguing with you, saying you're wrong, but it, it, it's the same couple little ones.
About the last time you asked me that question?
It was amended.
I'll show you what I'm working with.
Yeah.
If it's something different, I need to see why it's different, I don't, I don't see the final budget.
Yeah.
I come in for the budget work session, we work two hours, we go through everything, and the Canton City, uh, financial advisor gives me the budget when it's adopted. I don't know whether it's accurate or inaccurate.
But I have meetings with everybody, administration, you, everything else, waste all this time, and then it's not there, and then, and I'm not talking about a million dollars, talking about some things that are like, less than a hundred thousand, improve some, some issues. So, I mean, it's, it's the same thing every year, which, I'm glad Westdale's getting done, but, uh, there's, there's some other issues that are, some are small, that probably could be lumped in with something else that hasn't been done in three years that I keep asking about. So, um, I'mma be definitely very careful that budget, seeing how's it moving around, but.
I would just simply say, once you finish your budget session, keep a note and make account, and make somebody accountable when it gets adopted.
Yeah.
I don't see it till it's finally voted, introduced, and adopted. So, whatever I get handed only adopted is what I work on.
Well, President Kip brought this here, you keep putting things back, back, before next thing you know, it's off the book. And that's what I'm afraid of, and he said this here, a couple of years ago, and that's what I'm afraid of. We keep pushing it back, back, and I know this have nothing to do with you. I know that. And before you know it, it's off the book, but I know the mayor got two years left, and we keep putting things back and back, and it'll be off the book. That's why we got this big issue in here tonight, because we keep putting things back and back, and it'll be off the book. Thank you, Mr. Chuck.
Thank you.
Can I get a motion, please?
Make a motion to approve the lowest bid.
Second.
Councilman Andrews?
Aye.
Councilman Divatario?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilman Wells?
Aye.
Councilman Leon?
Aye.
Chuck, could I see you when we finish the meeting, please? Sound like a plane. Reports?
Uh, the Murray Pool opened up last Saturday, uh, it opens at eleven. Ten AM is for lap swimmers only, um, it's five dollars to get in. Mondays, they're closed. Uh, we wanna thank UPS and Vic Brown for donating two-thousand dollars, uh, to help kids learn how to swim for free. Uh, swim lessons are gonna be at Zoo Mary Park Pool. And, let's see, Pool is open June third, the, the, the summer camp also, there's a hundred-and-fifteen children. Uh, it is from June third to July, July twenty-sixth. And water aerobics every Tuesday and Thursday, nine to ten, for three dollars at Zoo Mary Pool.
Any council reports? Thank you, Mayor.
Yes, uh, thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Mayor, the sidewalk on Louisa West?
Got with, uh, Ace, and it's in line to be done. He knows about it, he saw where it was, and he's gonna get it done.
Okay, can you give, uh, you don't have a date or nothing in plan, huh?
No, sir.
Okay, we, I talked about this sidewalk two weeks ago.
Yep.
It's really a hazard for the people in the community to have a broken sidewalk. And that's all it take is one person to move the board, not somebody, not a city gonna be responsible for that. Now, another issue I have, Mr. Mayor, I think this one for you, too. The street sweeper on Carbin, Garrett. Know about those streets?
Soon as they can get to it, they'll get to it.
Could you tell me how many streets they got in front of me, please?
Not at the moment, tell you tomorrow.
See, and I'm glad you all in here. We just got the street sweeper. But if we had a parade downtown tonight, before you all wake up, you won't even know a bee been throwed on the ground. And I say this here, this in District Three. These be my fights all the time, and I shouldn't have to fight. I should be to come up here and do like the rest of the city councilmen. Ask for things for District Three, and things get done. Mr. Mayor, this for you also. We got a, we got a tree that put the power out in District Three. You know what I'm talking about in front of Carbin?
Well, District Four, too, it's kind of on that line.
Yes, you right, District Four and District Three. We got a, we got a tree, and this here tree fell, and we, we were still without power all the way to Sunday. Because this something that Sam brought up six months ago about the tree and the certitude. And it's the same tree that I, I cut limbs off of, and limbs wasn't removed until after Mother's Day. And I'm saying this here, it's amazing that you didn't know nothing about it when it was in the newspaper. The pictures and everything about this tree on Carbin, and all the debris, they done picked up the big stuff, but all the debris is still right along the road. And in the process of me cutting grass there, I have to move the debris, and I picked it up and got rid of it. But I'm saying, that's why it's important. If Sam, Carly, Steve, Kip, stop fighting among ourselves. And talk about the system. When Sam bring up something, he have to argue with the mayor, Andre, Steve, Carly. Look at the system, don't look at the fight, and see what's going on. If this tree would've been cut six months ago, we talking about a two-thousand-dollar project. Now, by time Energy get through, in which the guy from Energy said this here, he said, "Mr. Wells, we can, we can clean this up in two hours, but we get paid by the hour, and we from out of town." That's what he said, and you know what, I can't fault that man. It took, from the night of that storm, which was a Thursday, to Sunday, we got our lights on, for something that could've been avoided for two-thousand dollars. And pretty soon, with all of us, it gonna affect us, because guess what? Somehow gonna end up on our light bill, another project for twenty years or thirty years. So, when we see stuff like this, Mr. Mayor, and the rest of the city councilmen, let's kind of consider what's going on, and just think about it. It ain't so much is for you, think about the people you're representing. It affecting us now, we the ones who were without lights for a long period of time. Thank you so much, Councilman Sam, for even putting that ordinance on the book, and it didn't get passed, so, maybe we can kind of have somebody riding and looking at these damaged trees and getting them cut, cause the tree is damaged from the inside to the outside. Thank you.
Any more reports?
Like to also mention, uh, please, if you would, put your trash out, uh, the night before, your trash is due to be picked up. Uh, they're gonna be coming a little earlier, Waste Pro, because of the heat during the day, and picking up trash.
One more thing, too, for the residents, for the city of Hammond, it's time now for the residents to start taking on their garbage bill. We can't keep taking the garbage bill on. The garbage bill is low right now, but for the residents of Hammond, it's time for us to pass this, and the water bill, too. So, cause what it is, oh, boy, thank you so much. I got some agreements out of them, but it's time, because what's going on, it affecting District Three when it come to taxes. District Three be left out, so, we have to generate money some kind of way, while we can get this here park completed. And, Mr. Mayor, you say you love kids, so, could you please work with me on getting this here park completed, please?
Love to work with you, we're a year behind when we started to get this thing done. If you would work with me during the week, when I can answer questions for you, rather than bring it up here, where, you know, all the questions can be answered during the day, I can get a man from wherever, each department, to come and meet with you. I know you don't like to have closed-door meetings, so we can leave the door open, but we can come see you.
Okay, so, since you said that, Mr. Mayor, well, it's the public money, that's all. So, when you dealing with the public money, it's taxpayers' money. That's why I don't like closed doors meeting. So, Mr. Mayor, you tell me what date, and we can all meet in the park. Thank you, sir.
All right, I'm glad you brought up that statement, Mr. Well, Councilman Wells, in reference to the trash and everything. In the upcoming days, be on the lookout for a proposal that I would like to make to the council, I just need to, in the administration. I just need to meet with Andre right before that to clarify some things that I would like to bring forth to see that will resolve all of those issues. And, that's the only thing I have on my report. Can I get a motion to adjourn?